Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming and welcome to the June 3rd, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Here.
Councilmember Maloney? Absent. Councilmember Schmisher?
Here.
Councilmember Stein?
Here.
Councilmember Tracy?
Here.
Councilmember Worthington?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Here.
Mayor Troutman?
Here. And could we at this time have the, uh, Greg Worthington come up and do the invocation? Would you please rise?
Lord, we're just so thankful for this city. And, Lord, I'm just thankful for the mayor and the council members. I ask blessings upon them and their support staff that you give them a wisdom and direction to lead this city. And we're thankful for this city and we ask that it would be a city of peace, that it would be a city of unity, that it could be a light on a hill. And so we're just so grateful to live here. And so we thank you for your protection. We remember all those, uh, who are first responders. We ask for protection over them and we ask for blessings over them and their families. In your name, Lord. Amen.
Do you pledge allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the United States.
To America.
For which we stand.
One nation.
Under God.
In the Father.
In the Son.
And the Holy Spirit.
Liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you. We have, um, citizens that would like to speak to council. Lester, would you like to step forward and, uh, talk?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Lester Lamone. I'm, uh, here this evening representing, uh, the Historic Preservation Commission. Uh, I currently reside as its vice chair. So, uh, the reason I'm addressing you this evening is, um, during one of our last meetings of the Historic Preservation Commission, we, we have been continually talking, as you probably know, about the New Method Project and the New Method Site. Uh, during one of our meetings, there was a public suggestion that perhaps the New Method Site with all of its foibles, um, uh, could be considered as an alternate site to the Clock Tower Plaza Project. Um, as you know, the Clock Tower Plaza Project went through, um, a large public comment section and designs and, um, the offset of parking between the New Method area and the clock tower is the same amount of parking. And so one of, one of the folks in our meeting suggested that that might be a good use. We know, uh, that the New Method Site is problematic, uh, that it needs to be encapsulated most of all. Uh, the Historic Preservation Commission, of course, is concerned with the historic fabric of, of downtown and Main Street in particular. And we are continuing to look for creative ways to suggest, um, that that site not, not be just a parking lot. Um, obviously, it's a, a fabric of our downtown. It's not, uh, inside our historic boundary at this point. Um, it's not contributing. We understand its fate, um, certainly. Uh, many of us are in the business on that board and so we also understand the complexities of that site. Uh, but we want to continue to look for creative ways in order to, um, uh, bring life to that site while it needs to be a vacant, uh, lot until, again, remediation can be taken care of or there's, um, you know, again, testing and monitoring for a while until it can be developed. Um, certainly, it's, we would encourage, uh, any new development on that site that, that infills that and that it doesn't remain just parking. But, um, life on, on, uh, Main Street is, is equally important. So, uh, just because we have a hole doesn't mean we, we, uh, could fill it with parking or maybe it can take on a different, a different use. So, uh, I'm here just to, to pass along what we thought was a creative idea and one that we, um, would hope the council could at least throw around, talk about, discuss, consider. Uh, and again, I, I understand that the Clock Tower Project has had a lot of time and effort and expense. Um, but again, the, sometimes, uh, opportunities come from, uh, unexpected, um, circumstances. So I think this might be one of those.
Thank you, Les. Any comments of council? Emily?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and, and thanks for, uh, coming and, and passing along that idea. I guess, for me, I, I would need to hear a little bit more as I, I see those as two fairly different places. And, you know, the New Method Laundry, there's buildings on each side. The Clock Tower Plaza is open to two streets and so I'm having trouble, well, and, and this is aside from whatever design work would, that would have to be redone, but just trying to envision what kind of a space that would be if we did something like that at the New Method Site. I mean, is the vision, obviously, it wouldn't be a clock tower, but what else is envisioned at this point for what that might look like?
So, the proposed clock tower plan, um, lists elements that would be inside that space at the clock tower site. Those same types of elements could take place at the New Method, uh, as well. So you could still have stage area, you could still have open flexible seating areas. You could still have string lights between the two buildings. Uh, you could still have raised areas and soft areas and quiet areas as well. Um, public restrooms are still a part of that. There's remediation and demolition that's going to take, that's going to take place at that site that, that will already be at an elevation underground that, that plumbing could be considered, tho- those kinds of things. And so, um, certainly, again, encapsulation, I think, is, is the important part of New Methods' strategy moving forward. Um, that way, monitoring of, of the groundwater and, and the contamination can be monitored, um, is, is important. So, again, she, the shading area, the shaded sale areas, uh, the flexible speeds seating areas, all of those elements that were identified for Clock Tower Plaza could, could also be a part of the New Method Site.
Okay, thanks. That helps to hear a little more.
Thank you, Emily. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, but as, as I understand it, uh, Mr. Stevens, are the agreement that we have may preclude some, uh, permanent, um, improvements like the clock tower. In other words, I believe that there's a requirement that it be redeveloped within so many years or something like that. Is that correct?
With, uh, State Historic Preservation Office, we have an agreement to mark the site or redevelop the site to, uh, fill in that missing gap as, uh, we've called it, I know Mr. Lamone has, has called it a missing gap as well, or a missing tooth and smile. Um, so, you know, there are ideas for how to infill, uh, once the, the site has been remediated and, um, you know, we don't have any additional monitoring wells on the site. Uh, so there, there are some thought, there is thought going into how to fill that space so there isn't a, a gap on Main Street.
And luckily for us, I guess, that, uh, the time required for remediation may be years. So we do have a little time to kick things around.
It, it is. There's, there's a, you know, you know, it could be five years, it could be 10 years, it could be 15 years. We don't know until we get in and see what the level of contamination is. Um, but there are, you know, you know, if, if you're in that five to 10 year range, uh, there are opportunities to start applying for grants for some of the ideas for, for that site, uh, which would, you know, potentially be mixed use with, uh, the potential for a ground floor, you know, incubator or, uh, you know, uh, other types of items where we could, we could start pairing grants from the Economic Development Administration as well as, uh, you know, potential for housing units up above which are sorely needed in the community.
Thank you.
Yeah, may I address?
Yes, please.
Um, so, in the agreement, um, it does mention, is it a sunset, it's not a sunset, but it's a relook at the agreement after 15 years or, or something of that nature. So the, the agreement stretches out, you know, for more than a decade. And so we just looked at that as an opportunity where, uh, again, if, if that's, if that's the timeframe we're talking about before redevelopment can occur, then that's a significant amount of time where, where we could have activity, um, that's not just parking and streetlights. So, that, that's, and, and again, we're just asking that, uh, that consideration be paid to any opportunity that, that avails itself, uh, where, where this, where this site is concerned.
Amy?
I was going to say something very similar to Mr. Lamone, so I'm okay. Thanks.
Well, darn. No, just kidding.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think that, well, the, uh, sort of like eating an elephant, you have to eat a little bit at a time. I believe we have to get over the journey that we've been on to get it cleaned up and get it ready. And that's going to take a while, but I don't think that council, at least this one that I know of, has locked anything in. But we certainly are, I would be interested in ideas and we have a journey that will probably take us for many years. And, um, we'll go forward from there. But we look forward to your input and the, your group's input as well.
Well, and I just remind you that that actually, uh, came to us, that idea came to us, so, member of the public. So people are out there thinking about it and looking at it and paying attention.
And I think that would be welcomed when we finally get to a site that's, uh, we're, we're really sure we can do something on.
Yep.
And, uh, that's going to be a, a long walk for now. So.
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, Les.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Margie? Come on up. We, we're, we're not going to make you nervous or anything, but if you'd like to go, would you introduce yourself to us?
My name is Margie Jones and I appreciate being able to be here. Um, my situation has been going on for six years, um, since we moved into 1321 North, um, 10th Street. Um, and when I came over here to a counseling meeting, uh, one of these with a friend, I thought, oh my goodness, I might be able to get some help over here. Um, anyway, my, um, we've been living there since November 2017. The gentleman that owned the home, he, um, he had a post office box and he didn't put his, he took his mailbox down. And, um, he said that when he, we saw it in his, um, garage, uh, he said, well, yeah, just go ahead and put it out there in the front. Cause in the front is where there was supposed to be two spots, two mailboxes, right on that side of the street. Well, um, one day I was retired state, retired state, and then my husband was still working at DOC. So I've been dealing with this every year. Um, but the lady that was the mail carrier, she came through and then she left me a sticky note. I, um, that I needed to move the mailbox from the front of the house off of North 10th Street and put it on the side on Woodlawn. And, but there was no spot for a mailbox there. So, I, I was a little bit intimidated by her and so then we said, okay, let's just go move it over there. So we put two rods in there and we put that on the side. Well, come to find out, that's what, she just wanted to make a straight shot from Woodlawn to go straight across. And so then I said, well, got to put the mailbox back where it belongs. So we moved the mailbox. She accused us of, um, that we moved the mailbox where it was supposed to be. And so then the, um, was it postmaster? Um, tried to talk to him and he said, no, that we needed to move the mailbox back or I needed to claim a disability on having it on the wrong side of the street. So I had to go to the doctor and get, um, because I'm a vet, I had to get, uh, PTSD, uh, and have him put a letter together so that I can present that. So I could put the mailbox where it's supposed to legally be. So I don't understand that. And, um, the, the lady across the street is also supposed to be crossing the street. There's a spot for her mailbox, but that was removed a long time ago as well.
So where is, I'm confused. Where's your mailbox right now?
I put it back in the front because.
In front on, on 10th Street or?
On 10th Street where it's supposed to be. I moved it back and then that's when I started getting the, the threatening things or whatever letters, um, from him. And then, um, so anyway, I, I left it there. Well, she kept bundling up the mail, the mail carrier bundled up the mail, put a note on it and stuff. Or she left us a sticky note and said, no mail is going to be dropped off here because there's no mailbox on Woodlawn. And, um, so I had to go to the post office to go pick up the mail. And then she had written all in the front there with the sticky note saying that there was no post off, there was no mailbox there. So I had to do this.
Who, who's in dispute here? I know that, um, that's federal government. This is, um, um, interesting and I don't know how helpful we could be. Love to. But I'm wondering if that's, uh, where did they finally settle? Woodlawn, 10th Street? Where, where is it now? Again?
The house. The mailbox is supposed to be in the front of the door where the posts are on 1321 North 10th.
And they don't want it there?
They're saying that, that we need to put a fake posting over on the side.
Okay. Really, that discussion needs to be with the postmaster. Unfortunately, there, I don't think there's a whole lot we can do about it. Would you, Catherine, it's our attorney.
Sorry. Uh, no, I, I don't think so. It's, I, I think it's where the post office wants the mailbox to be so they can deliver the mail.
Yeah.
So, I mean, obviously, if your neighbor is harassing you or whatnot, if, I could pick that up at the beginning of the story.
No, the post office.
The post office?
Yes, and the mail carrier.
Oh, oh, okay. I apologize. I thought it was your neighbor. Okay.
Yeah, no, no, it's the mail carrier.
So can I ask, sorry, I, I kind of got, I, I lost track there a little bit in the middle. So where does the post office want your mailbox? Or have they told you? They, they want it on Woodlawn?
It's, it's supposed to be on Woodlawn. The guy, um, the previous owner, he said, no, it's supposed to be on North 10th Street. But he said he didn't, he took it down because he was going to get a post office box.
Right, okay.
So then they want us to stick it on the side of the, on Woodlawn.
Okay. And have you, have you done that? No?
No.
You don't want?
Then, no. What happened was, that was 2017. So then 2018, or after battling them with this for like eight months, then he said, here, fill this out and you have to have a, some kind of disability saying why you can't have it right there on the side of the street.
Okay, and you filled that out?
So I filled it out.
Uh huh.
But that's not where it's supposed to be, but I filled it out and so now it's in the front. But every year he keeps sending me the letter saying, you need to prove it again. You need to prove it again.
Okay. So I'm not familiar with the U.S. Postal Service regulations. Um, I wouldn't be surprised to hear you have to file that every year. That would not shock me at all. That, that'd make you go through that hoop. Um, but yeah, the city can't control where your mailboxes are or where they're supposed to be.
So who do you go above him?
Um, above the postmaster? Uh, I, I don't know. Actually, it's the answer to that question. I'm not sure.
Washington, right?
Yeah.
I would, yeah, potentially sit, uh, reaching out to your, uh, local congressional representative. Oh, looks like we've got.
Andrea.
Andrea?
Hello?
Go ahead. Sorry. I missed, I couldn't. Has something happened on the screen that I should be seeing? There was a hand?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll raise my hand. Okay. Here I am. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. This is a federal issue. And if I were you, I would write a letter to your U.S. Representative in Congress, Brittany Pedersen, and just outline everything that's happened, as much information as you can. And, um, perhaps she could straighten this out for you. She has been, uh, dealing with the postal, um, service and some challenges in Colorado. So she might have some ideas. She might be able to help you, uh, but it doesn't cost anything, uh, just to send her a letter.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
You might want to call her office. I don't know if she's got a local office in the.
She has a local office.
I call the Washington DC office. I'd call and send a letter, but I'd call. Cause you might get a staff member who might be able to help you.
There's a staff member lives in Penrose, actually. We have the number. Emily, go ahead. I'm sorry. No, you, I'm sorry. Are you, are done, Andrea?
Apparently, yes, okay.
No, 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 I, I.
Sorry, Andrea.
You weren't shaking your hand, but anyway.
Yes, she has a local representative and they're, and local office. But putting things in writing is always the best, uh, policy. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Emily?
Yeah, I was just going to mention that Congresswoman Pedersen does have a local person here in Canyon City. His name is Justin Kerth. I have not been in the office, but I think it's on Greenwood between Sixth and Seventh, somewhere in that area. I don't know what his office hours are, but that might be another option too, in addition to the other suggestions.
Yeah, okay.
Kathy?
That's exactly what I was going to say too, was that it has a local.
She does. And Amy?
Um, Clerk Foster Owens just gave the email address and phone number for that local representative.
Yes. Try that and it would be interesting. Representative Pedersen was just here last week.
Oh.
And, uh, so you, you missed it by 72 hours. No, I'm just kidding. But, uh, but try that.
Okay, I know.
At least our, um, interaction with Justin and with Brittany have been very good.
Okay.
And she's listened well, so.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Okay, I hope it works out and you get your mail.
Yeah, that's right. No, I.
Thank you. Okay. Well, that was refreshing, wasn't it? I wish it wouldn't get some of my mail, but nah, well.
That'll teach Justin not to attend our meetings.
That's right. He needs to get here. Um, all right, let's move forward. Any council member announcements? John?
Yes, we do have, uh, it's the first of the month, so we do have KRLN again Wednesday. Uh, and I think you and I did it last time.
Yes.
So we're looking for other people to perhaps step in. That'd be Wednesday morning at 8:30.
I'm happy to go.
Good. Amy won't be there. Okay?
Anybody else?
All right. Thank you, Amy. It's 8:30, KRLN. Uh, 1500 on the dial. Is that right?
1400.
1400, okay. Well, inflation, everything goes up, you know, so it's like. Amy?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that the library has kicked off their summer reading program and that they, we, once again, are ahead of the curve of the rest of Colorado. I take it the metro Denver area has now expanded theirs to adults as well and our library has been doing that for years. Um, their kickoff program was last week and they had over a hundred folks in attendance. They'll have three or four more, um, partnership programs in the coming weeks, including, um, with some local nonprofit organizations on river safety and other hot topics. So just encourage everybody to head on down to the library for learning and reading and fun.
Wow. We had a very nice comment from Representative Pedersen. She had been to our library and saw how beautiful it was and how it was well restored. And she just sort of gushed over the whole thing. So if you're out there and would like to see, go down, look at our library. It's just really beautiful. They brought it back to the period that it was originally created in, so we're quite proud of that. Uh, another thing, we have General Government Meeting here at 6 o'clock. Um, that will be regarding stormwater and some kind of presentation from Black Hills.
Yes, sir. We'll have Black Hills to present on their Clean Energy Plan, uh, update as well as the storm response from, uh, the storm, uh, the winter storm a couple of months ago.
Okay. Any other comments from council? Do we see any hands on the big screen up there? Fairly not. Okay. And we are going to do a proclamation. And I can't find my proclamation. It's in here? No. All right. I have to put my glasses on. We have, uh, from, we have DeeDee and, and Della representing the Hunger Awareness Day, which is June the 6th, 2024. Would you like to come up to the podium and, and say hi and then we'll, does everybody have a copy of the proclamation? Why don't we read it, uh, a little, we're going to read it a little bit at a time and then you're going to get a signed copy by the mayor of Canyon City, which you will keep forever. Just kidding. So, Amy, would, would you like to start?
Sure thing. Office of the Mayor proclamation, National Hunger Awareness Day, June 6th, 2024. Whereas in 2024, National Hunger Day was established to call attention to the growing problem of domestic hunger and.
Whereas in the United States, 44 million people, including 13 million children, do not have enough to eat and do not know where their next meal will be come from.
And whereas poverty, unemployment and low wages and lack of affordable housing are the leading causes of flood insecure, food, excuse me, insecurity in America and.
Whereas Canyon City has a population of 17,258 and approximately 14.1% are considered to live in poverty and.
Whereas in Canyon City, Colorado, there are over 2,600 individuals who receive food assistance from local food pantries and.
Whereas one in every seven citizens in Canyon City do not have enough food to eat and.
Whereas there are five food pantries in Canyon City who distribute over 50,000 pounds of food monthly and.
Whereas local food pantries are seeing a significant increase in the number of individuals seeking food assistance since 2003.
There, now, therefore, I, Mayor Preston Troutman, do hereby proclaim Thursday, June 6th, 2024 as Hunger Awareness Day and this proclamation is dated today. Would either of you like to add in, chime in, so to speak? DeeDee?
Um, again, just want to say thank you for, for doing this and for recognizing National Hunger Awareness Day. Um, I, I also want to just mention that we actually have a fundraiser coming up. It's called Eat Out to Help Out, which is June 6th. And many of the local restaurants here in Canyon City and Florence are participating in this. Um, uh, we have, we have provided them with table tents that will go on the restaurant, um, tables. And then as patrons are, are eating a yummy meal there, there's a QR code where they can contribute to, to Loaves and Fishes. And the, and the money that is raised during this campaign will actually support, um, our food pantry. I believe many of you are aware that we're in the process of completing a brand new 5,000 square foot warehouse. Should be completed hopefully in July. And the plan would be is that we'll go back to a, um, client self-select grocery store. And, um, well, it'll also allow us to store a, a lot more food. And we're able to then hopefully reach out to, um, um, to the, the outer edges of Fremont County that many of them are actually living in what we would call a food desert where there's not a local grocery store and they're having to rely on gas stations and things like that. So. So again, it means a lot to us to get support from the city council. We truly appreciate that and appreciate all the support that you've given to Loaves and Fishes over the years. So thank you very much for doing this.
Thank you, DeeDee and Della. Thanks for coming. Thank you. Yeah, let's do that, yes.
Carrie couldn't be here, but she said, take a picture and send it.
I would take a picture and send it to you.
Uh, oh, you have a picture and then send it to me? Okay.
Thank you. You're out. You didn't have to.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, you guys.
Thank you. Thanks, Preston. We appreciate it. It's, um, it's a great meeting. Thank you. Thank you guys. Thank you. You'll have a nice picture and I will get it corrected. Pardon? I saw it, thank you.
Okay, continuing on, could we ask the city administrator to review the agenda and consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Item eight A is to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on May twentieth. The vision committee, vision committee meeting on May twenty-second, and the special meeting executive session on May twentieth. Eight B accepts the resignation of planning commission and board of adjustments member Randy Smith. Eight C authorizes the city administrator to sign a professional services agreement for safe routes to school materials testing with vivid engineering. Eight D awards bid forty-three twenty-four, three M Peltor headsets to Alpha India LLC, and an amount not to exceed seven thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars and five cents. Seven, I'm sorry, eight E awards bid forty-five twenty-four for forty-eight-inch latitude fentanyl filter hood to Myster, Myster, and an amount not to exceed seven thousand eighty dollars. And eight F is to receive and file cash dispersments.
Okay, are there any additions or corrections or discussion from council? I have one, and it's the this hood arrangement, is that going to be at the police department or?
It is, yes, sir.
Okay.
That's for evidence processing for fentanyl and other dangerous substances.
Okay, so no additions and corrections then? Oh, I'm sorry, Emily?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I had sent an email just asking for a little clarification about that item eight E. Sounds like the plan for the police department is to purchase the hood itself, but not the stand and the filters that we had seen in a proposal reply form. But I just wanted to be sure that that was clear, that if they find they need that in the future, I guess they would then find something within their existing budget to cover those.
That is correct. They don't believe that they need the stand, and it's our understanding that the model that we're purchasing comes with the first set of filters.
Hey, Amy?
I also just wanted to commend the police department on both item eight D and eight E. I understand that due to additional diligence and work done by the police department, that it's actually resulted in a cost savings to the department, both for the cost of shipping that hood, as well as finding a new vendor that they feel really confident with on the headset. So just wanted to commend them for that extra effort and saving the taxpayers those dollars.
Thank you, Amy. Anybody on the big screen want to comment or anything? I'm not ignoring you, okay.
Just saying, Councilmember Schmisher.
Oh, would you like, chief, would you like to chime in here?
Yeah, sure, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank Ms., our Councilwoman Schmisher for those kind words.
Well, thank you. Thank you for attending. You look so much different on the big screen.
Yes, sir.
All right. Seeing no addition, are there any additions and corrections? Could I ask for a motion of council for the agenda and the consent agenda?
Mayor Troutman, I move that we approve the consent agenda and agenda as written.
Okay. Emily?
Second.
Second, and discussions on that motion. Hearing none, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammerick?
Aye.
Okay, and then at this time, I'd invite the city administrator for his report.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of council. You have the written reports in your packets. Couple of highlights, as it's already been mentioned earlier in this meeting. We had staff and council member representatives. They met with Representative Pedersen last week to talk about a potential reservoir project down near John Griffin Park. And her office has been instrumental in connecting us with the Army Corps of Engineers for potential of, you know, looking at it from a feasibility study. We've partnered with the Rec District and the Sanitation District, as well as River Science, to look at this project for not only storage rights of for water, but also improving the habitat down there, the riparian habitat, and other potential recreation benefits for the future of Canyon City. So very early stages, this is something that is going to be looked at and considered as part of the Water Master Plan. But we've seen some early traction with this potential program.
Okay.
Happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions of the city administrator? I thought before Sunday we'd barrage him with questions, but I guess, just kidding. Okay, next thing on the agenda is a public hearing. I have to recuse myself from this because I have advised and worked with the owner of this property. And so therefore, I'm going to secure myself in that back room. And when you're all done, we'll turn it over to Mayor Pro Tim. And I will, if you will ask me to come back, don't let me sit there all night, okay?
That's a deal. So if our mayor did not open the public hearing, I will open the public hearing. This is introduction and first reading by title only of ordinance two, series twenty-twenty-four, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Res zoning the Real Property Located at 726, 730, and 734 Harding Avenue in the City of Canyon City." Mr. City Planner, would you like to address us?
Certainly. Good evening, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, members of council. This evening, we are here to consider a request by the owner of three parcels located in the seven-hundred block of Harding Avenue to rezone the property from R-one, low-density residential, to R-two, medium-density residential. The property that is the subject of this requested rezoning hearing is located at the southwest corner of North Eighth Street and Harding Avenue in the northwesterly portion of Canyon City. Earlier this year, the property was divided into three lots, each approximately seven thousand five hundred twenty square feet. Collectively, all three lots are twenty-two thousand five hundred sixty square feet in area. The property was annexed into Canyon City as part of Harding's second edition in nineteen seventy-eight. Harding Avenue represents approximately the northerly edge of this annexation. And as a residential annexation, Harding's second edition was zoned pretty much in its entirety, R-one, low-density residential, and developed in a manner consistent with that zoning beginning in the nineteen eighties. The subject property itself was formerly the location of a single-family residence, which fell into disrepair and was demolished in twenty-twenty. The property has a relatively uniform grade, experiencing only a slight grade change to the south, near the unbuilt alley right-of-way, and to the west, where the property abuts a ditch. The subject property is owned R-one, low-density residential, and is bordered to the east, south, and west by R-one zoning, but with one exception. To the north, the subject property, the, to the north of the subject property is the Skyview Villas Townhomes. An area is owned R-two, medium-density residential, with a PUD overlay, which allows party walls between the units to be located over lot lines. The applicant is seeking to construct duplex residential units on the three lots which comprise this property. To do this, the R-one zoning would need to be changed to a zone district which allows for paired homes. R-two medium-density and R-three high-density both allow for such uses, but the applicant has chosen to pursue R-two in order to be compatible with the townhome development zoning to the north. Section seventeen-ten-zero-four-zero-D of the city's Unified Development Code provides four criteria for rezoning requests. By code, in order for a rezoning effort to be considered, at least one of the four criteria must be met. The first criteria associated with evaluating a rezoning request is whether the rezoning is consistent with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. For this portion of Canyon City, the comprehensive plan designates this area as single-family residential, the definition for which reads, "Single-family residential areas include neighborhoods that are primarily made up of single-family detached homes. This category also allows for lower-density, single-family, attached homes. Thus, the proposed use is consistent with the land use designation under the comprehensive plan." The third criteria associated with the evaluation of this, of rezoning requests concerns whether or not the request itself is consistent with the purpose statement of the zone district as established in chapter seventeen oh two of the city's Unified Development Code. As stated in the UDC, the purpose of the R-one district is to provide and preserve areas for single-family homes and other necessary incompatible uses, such as ADUs. The R-two district's purpose statement encompasses the applicant's request when it states that its purpose is to provide and preserve areas for single-family and duplex residential development. Thus, the rezoning request does meet the third criteria for rezoning. With two criteria met, this rezoning is eligible for consideration by planning commission and city council. Now, to summarize, as of today, staff has received no email or mail concerning this request. Staff has received one phone call concerning this request from a representative of the Skyview Townhome Villas. The nature of the inquiry dealt with whether manufactured homes or mobile homes could be built on site. Mobile homes are prohibited in the R-two medium-density residential zone district. There are only two zone districts in the city that allow mobile homes, MH-one Mobile Home Park and MH-two Mobile Home Subdivision. However, manufactured homes are permitted in every residential zone district in Canyon City. It was pointed out to the representative that the applicant seeks the ability to build duplex units on the property that is the subject of this rezoning hearing, not unlike the attached townhomes and Skyview Villas across the street. During the planning commission's hearing on this request conducted May twenty-second, two people came to speak at the public hearing. One asked how tall the buildings could be. The answer to that is that all buildings within the R-two zone district, including Skyview Villas, can be up to forty feet tall, which equates to three stories, when measured from finished grade. The second was also a resident of Skyview Villas who came forward to speak in support of the rezoning request as she believed townhome units similar to what Skyview Villas has built would be an excellent use at this location. To summarize staff's findings, this rezoning proposal, when evaluated against the criteria for rezonings, is valid and can be considered for approval. Also, planning commission found that the public notice requirement for this project had been met, giving the City of Canyon City jurisdiction to act on this land use request. With that, both staff and the planning commission recommend city council approve the rezoning request for the three-part Mcduffie parcels addressed to 726, 730, and 734 Harding Avenue from R-one low-density residential to R-two medium-density residential by the adoption of ordinance two, series of twenty-twenty-four, on first reading and set second reading for June seventeenth. That would conclude the staff presentation. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have. I was hoping that my applicant would show up, but I don't see them in the audience.
The applicant is not online, are they? Okay.
If I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim Hammerick. So I just want to make sure that the city still has a telephonic participation policy from COVID leftover. Ryan, and I don't believe it's been modified since then. It does not allow the two council members online to participate or vote in the quasi-judicial matter that's before you. So it's only the four of you, which is fine.
Which is a quorum.
Which is a quorum, and fine, but I just wanted to let the two on online know that, so they may not have been aware of that.
Okay. Hopefully, you caught that, Tim and Andrea. Since the applicant is not present, does city council have any questions? Does participation, does that, voting only, or if they had questions, they could ask questions?
They are not allowed to participate.
Not allowed to participate? Okay, thank you. All right. Questions from council? Oh. I'm going to scooch over here. Emily?
Thanks. Thanks, Mayor Pro Tim. I, and I don't know if our city planner can answer this. I was just curious as to, there was mention of the townhomes to the north and how they were designed to have the lot line and the wall line up. So they're actually lots, I guess, for separate ownership. But, and I don't know if we would know at this point if the ultimate plan is to do something like with this. I think so far, it sounds like it's just duplexes that would be, you know, either both sides rented, or maybe one side is owner occupied, the other side rented, or what do we know about that?
What was conveyed to planning commission was that these are intended for rental occupancy. If they ever wanted to make them owner occupied, probably the only pathway they could take to do that would be filing a condominium plat, which would include creating a condominium association to own common areas and having some sort of a declaration of, you know, the homeowner's association's responsibility. The problem with further subdividing the property is that, under the R-two zoning, you have to have a minimum lot frontage along the street of forty feet. Given the way the three lots exist now, there would be no way to further subdivide them and have them all meet that forty-foot minimum requirement.
So is that not, or was it not an issue for the townhomes on the north side?
What the townhomes did was file a PUD overlay on top of the R-two that effectively removed the idea that you had to have a side yard setback. This allowed them to have the party wall become also the lot line. They could potentially do that if they wanted to have these owner occupied and, you know, file a PUD rezoning. At this point, I don't know that they have any interest in having the units owner occupied from what they've conveyed to us.
And so at least at this point, from what we know, all they really need is this rezoning to R-two to accomplish what they want to do with building.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Amy?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Planner Mulleridi for the level of specificity put into the document about what occurred during planning commission. I know that's something that we had talked about in previous iterations and just appreciate the extra time and effort that went into that. I also just wanted to ask if maybe we could bring that policy back before council at some point in time, given that we are well past those days at this point.
We've already discussed that.
Wonderful, glad to hear it, thank you.
We will bring something back. What was adopted had special language for emergency situations, and because we were in an emergency declaration for so long, it's time for a refresh.
Along those lines, have we, have we declared the emergency over?
We did last year.
Thank you, good. All right. DeeDee, being a member of the public, would you, any comments you would like to make on this? Thank you. So I will close the public meeting at this point, and we have had the presentation. Oops, and Kathy?
I was just going to make the motion, but I'll wait till the hearing.
And the hearing is over. Kathy?
I got one button. Okay, I would like to make the motion to approve ordinance number two, series of twenty-twenty-four, by title on first reading and set second reading for June seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you.
Second.
You can't, Tim, sorry.
Oh, gotcha.
I need a second from council. We have a second from Emily. So we have a motion and second, any discussion on that? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy?
Aye.
Councilmember Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammerick?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes, and so now we're ready to rescue someone, I believe.
Well, thank you. That was lonely back there, so to speak. Okay, where are we? Discussion. Today, we're going to have eleven A, which is co-responder program restructuring. Could we have the city administrator give us a presentation, or staff, someone?
Yes, sir.
That's always left.
I will, I will get us kicked off, and then I'll turn it over to the chief. We've been partnering with Soul Vista on a co-responder grant that we received from the Colorado Department of Behavioral Health for several years now.
Department of Behavioral Health for several years now. We've gone through various iterations. The initial iteration, we had a law enforcement officer, partnered with a co-response person, somebody in the behavioral health field that worked for Solvista, and they would respond to crisis intervention type of events, trying to eliminate certain calls from, from the police department, trying to find a better, better route to get people the services and connect them to the services that they needed. Several, a couple of years ago, we went to the Colorado Municipal League Annual Conference and saw how other communities were conducting this, this type of program, and it was more focused on the behavioral health side. Didn't, people had, they were using their grants for more of the behavioral health, the co-response and navigator type of programs. So, we, we restructured the, the program a couple of years ago, trying to get us more behavioral health professionals to put on the streets. So, we had seven, a full seven days' worth of coverage. We have not seen the success in that program. We, we have some disconnects between ourselves and Solvista, and what we're looking at today is council approval to bring this fully in-house within the city at the police department. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Schick to cover everything else I missed.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As Mr. Stevens indicated, we're, we're looking to restructure our program, to bring about more consistency in our program processes and with our aligning our mission and vision of the CCPD and co-response services afforded to our community. Historically, the program's been managed beneath dual administrative structures in that we were the grant, we were the grantee, and we were the financial side of this, this merger, and Solvista would hire folks to fulfill our mission. And unfortunately, those dual administrative structures with, you know, duplicate programs and policies just hasn't, hasn't, hasn't meted out the success we had hoped for. Regrettably, this structure, regrettably, at times produces ambiguity, ambiguity and inconsistencies in our service posture. So, we're just looking to bring the co-response unit into the PD to help alleviate those concerns. In this light, the program funding, program funding will provide for one clinician and one navigator to both become full-time city employees, and an additional layer to offer guidance, review, and oversight will be adding a licensed behavioral health consultant to ensure lawful and best practices to our clients of the program. Both the funding, the funding of FTEs and the consultant for fiscal year 24 and 25 have been verified and approved by the BHA Grant Administrator and the city's Finance and Human Resources Directors, as well as the city administrator. The total grant revenue for fiscal year 24, 25 will be $230,000, and these changes, we seek to be reflected in the mid-year budget amendment. The grant fully funds personnel, training, travel, and supplies and operating expenses. And while we are, we're splitting our merger with Solvista in terms of direct relationships, we, we fully anticipate after, after having met with Mandy Kaiser, the new chief executive officer for Solvista, we, we are certainly optimistic that we'll continue a robust partnership in, in providing ancillary services to the folks that we contact in our community. I'll answer any questions council may have.
Excuse me, Emily. Please. Emily?
Thanks. Thanks, chief. It's helpful to hear your summary about what the plan is. A couple of things that occurred to me. I recall sometime back that we had approved purchase of some equipment, maybe radios. I'm not sure if there was other equipment for the coresponders to use. So, I, I would imagine that those kinds of things then are already in place, and you can verify that for me. And then I wonder if you could also address with the plan to have one clinician, one navigator, how will that impact coverage? You know, your, your agency, of course, is a 24/7 kind of agency. So, what are you anticipating along those lines?
Well, yes, ma'am. And all of the equipment purchases will remain CCPD property, and the navigator and clinician will still benefit from those purchases. Regarding coverage, you know, will, the best coverage plan will be determined based upon the results of a service call analysis. You know, the last time we did that was probably about a year and a half ago, and our, our greatest service demands were during the day and on the weekdays. So, we'll, we'll study, we'll take a look at that again to get a better snapshot of when our, our co-response team members should be out there providing services. But it is our intention to cover as much of the week as possible with both of these entities working four 10-hour days, splitting the week. So, most likely, there will be some overlap, which will be necessary because, in essence, the clinician will be the oversight for the navigator on the day-to-day affairs.
Thanks.
Amy?
Thank you. I'm wondering if you could speak a little bit about support and training and how you envision those occurring with the program being brought into the CCPD. Obviously, we love to see partnerships with community agencies, and I think the one with a behavioral health service in this particular program was particularly important, given the unique nature and the unique skill set that those individuals brought to the job. Understanding some of the challenges and the dual administrative structure just meant that it wasn't tenable. I'm wondering if you can speak to how CCPD will mitigate some of the challenges that bringing it in-house when it comes to the expertise and the, the unique skill set, the skill sets that these individuals bring, how you envision working that? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. That's a, that's a great question. We are also going to pair, I mentioned briefly in, in your memo, we're gonna pair with a former Solvista employee who is retired, and, and she was, she spearheaded the evolution of co-response team early on. And so, she is a clinical, she's a clinician in a mental health field, licensed in the state of Colorado, and she will, she will provide some of that modeling to help us, you know, obtain best practices in our pursuits and work closely with our current clinician to help Ms. Barnett gain her Colorado licensure and, and carve out, you know, the best pursuits to put us in the best position to be successful. Ms. Thomas is very familiar with the department's vision and mission, and our goals are in complete alignment. So, I suspect through her tutorials, through her leadership, and the ongoing training, I mean, we are scheduled next week, myself, Commander Leonard, who is the Support Services Commander over the co-response group, and the clinician are attending the National Co-Response Conference to dig in a little more on best practices and, and different models and, and things to, to try and put us on the right path.
Thank you. That's really helpful, and it's great to hear that you and your command staff are continuing your own education in terms of, of best practices. Mayor, if I may ask one additional?
You sure can.
Thank you. Understanding that the current model's vision was to provide that seven-day-a-week coverage and that the new model would only provide four, even with kind of targeting those days that have the most call volume, I'm wondering how you envision handling when calls inevitably come in on the other three days a week?
Well, yes, ma'am. And, and don't misunderstand me. If those, if the call, a service call analysis suggests that we split the week and they only have one overlap day, we will have the entire week covered. But we're certainly gonna try and focus on those service times where, you know, the, the direct support is absolutely needed. When those individuals, because again, even if we have seven days covered, we only have 10 hours of the day covered. So, there's a 14-hour gap there that we will still rely on Solvista and their emergency crisis, crisis response team to support us in that, in that way. And, and if they get called out and we have follow-up or ancillary services that we need to provide the client the following day, then our clinician and our navigator would pick up on that.
Thank you so much for that clarification. I really appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just kind of a comment to the, to reinforce perhaps what, what's already been asked and answered here. But the, one of the takeaways that I got from the, from our CML conference, where we had other organizations presenting what they had done in the co-responder area, was something that, that I call the halo effect, where because they had licensed clinicians and health professionals, the training and the interaction and even just daily conversations that they had with the frontline police officers were, were identified as a, as a great benefit to those police departments. And so, I would just make that comment, and don't forget that, that that's, that's an important, and from what, from what we have learned from others, that's an important aspect to the, to the whole program. Thank you.
You're absolutely correct, Mayor Protem, and, and we are looking to build on that effect, having, and, and it's going to, it's gonna streamline those relationships, right? When, when our, our coresponders are, are both assigned to the police department under one administrative umbrella, if you will, following the same vision and mission alignment, that's, that's going to make them feel more as part of the team, and those relationships are absolutely critical to understanding the needs in the field and, and better service to our, our customers.
Anyone else? Emily?
Thanks. I, I may have missed this, chief, but can you just clarify, do we have a clinician now, and we're gonna be hiring a navigator, or what's the status of filling those positions?
So, we currently have a clinician. She has a master's degree in that service field. She will start this fall. Our plan is to have her pursue her Colorado licensure so that she will be a fully licensed and, and functioning clinician in every aspect of, of the job. And it is our goal to utilize this next year under the, the tutelage of our consultant to bring the clinician into a role that she can serve as the direct leadership component. And, and if all things go well, then we will not require consulting services in the future.
And navigator is?
I'm, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. With navigator, that, that position is bare. We will have to advertise and, and recruit and, and do some selection processes to get somebody on board.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Amy?
Thanks. I just wanted to recognize that we have an audience member with a certain degree of expertise in this field, and I wasn't sure if she had any questions or comments or if that would be appropriate at this time.
DeeDee?
No, I just, I just wanted to hear the conversation.
Okay. Just from my part, chief, if, from, just a member of the public looking in at this.
Yes, sir.
Is it, can you, in 25 words or less, I'm just kidding, of course, how, how would you respond to the general public saying, "What is that? What is co-response? What do you do? Who, who calls this responder out? What situation is that?"
That, that's a great question and, and something we need to focus on in, in the coming year, marketing this a little more productively. But essentially, co-response role is to intervene in either acute or chronic crisis that, you know, is impacting somebody's life to the point that they, they reach out for police services, but it may not, the call itself, the situation itself, may not be a police services matter. It may not be a matter of, of law and order. It may not be a matter of, of criminal behavior. It may just, it's typically just somebody who's experiencing crisis, and that can be anything from mental health to homelessness to, you know, any number of, of crises that position someone to call the police department regularly, because they have a hard time sorting out those situations and coming out of that crisis. And the goal for us is to put our co-response team in contact with them and provide them the wraparound services and support that they need to overcome that crisis so that the citizen or the client doesn't feel compelled to call on police services. We, historically, when these crises go unsupported, if you will, we typically see our police service calls go up. We, we refer to these folks often as high-end utilizers. So, co-response's job is to help them in those, those times of crisis to find their way so that they don't continue to rely on police services for non-police matters.
Thank you. It's more than 25 words, but I appreciate it.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I take the long way around the barn often.
I'm kidding. You know, and I know that would be subject to, what I drew out, what I wanted, heard, and what I thought I would hear was that it's not just for the homeless or whatever. It's for the community. It's a community service.
Yes, sir.
And hopefully, that keeps down so that the threshold doesn't push someone into a criminal activity.
Yes, sir.
And that's, that's really what we're looking for. So, it's a preventative measure for everybody.
Absolutely.
Okay. That's what, okay. Thank you. Any questions of council? Would someone like to make a motion? Emily?
I move that we approve the proposed restructuring of the co-response program to incorporate it fully within the police department.
Second?
Second. Kathy, thank you, Kathy. Any discussions on that motion? Hearing none. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye. Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hammer?
Aye.
Well, that's it. Thanks for another great session, and we are now adjourned.